Good evening. I'll go ahead and get us started. If you will bow with me for our invocation, we'll get our meeting started. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this beautiful, beautiful day and this nice warm weather. Lord, just thank you for creating these wonderful days for us. And Lord, just thank you for allowing us to be here in this wonderful county, among these great people. And Lord, just thank you for providing us all that you do for us and providing us to be able to be here and have a public forum. And Lord, just thank you for our safety. Lord, just be with those that are experiencing the COVID virus and those that have lost family members. Or we just ask you to put your arms around them and take care of them. And Lord, just give us a great meeting here tonight. And we just pray that everything that's said and done here tonight will honor and glorify you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
We'll pledge our United States flag and our Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
And our Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to Georgia flag to the principles which stands wisdom, justice, and moderation.
Thank you all. May be seated. Okay, this time we'll ask the clerk to call the roll of the board, please.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Present.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Okay, all members are present of the board here tonight. Before you, board members, you do have the minutes from our meeting back on February the 12th. We'll ask for a motion to approve these minutes at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore and a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion on the minutes?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll sign these into our minutes to the record. Okay, I got ahead of myself here, fellas. Sorry about that. We have our agenda in front of us. And so one thing too to bring to your attention is we have moved our public comment section up. Since we've been having our executive sessions, we wanted to be able to give citizens the opportunity to speak. And also if there's items on the agenda that they even want to speak about, they can do so instead of it being at the end. So I thought we would try that and see how that works for us. So that's really only structural or format change that we have there tonight. So getting this back in order here, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz and a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll ask for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Our agenda is approved. So since we got us, I got us a little out of the order. We do have our minutes approved. So at this time, we'll ask if anyone would like to come forward for a public comment. Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come up first? You come up to the podium here and we'll give you five minutes. And I guess that you keep your comments relative to things going on in Walker County. Go right ahead.
I have two things. First, I want to thank you for changing your agenda. That's probably the smartest thing you've done since you've been in office. Second thing is, last meeting, we left some information for each of you about flags and crosses. Unfortunately, because of your agenda at that time, COVID vaccine just doesn't allow you to stay up late. It sends you home. But we did not get a chance to stay and talk to you. So the second thing is, I want to talk to you about flags and crosses. I don't want to complain. I don't want to argue about anything. This is FYI. Flags and crosses. It's a joint venture between the Lafayette Women's Club and American Legion Post 339 here in Lafayette. Purpose is to renovate, replace, and repair the crosses for the 192 fallen heroes of Walker County. Those crosses were originally displayed on the bypass on Memorial Day. And over the last few years, they've been displayed in Joe Stop Park. I suspect chilling putting up crosses on the bypass got to be an issue. So they moved them to Joe Stop Park. Very crowded. Crosses very dilapidated, not near worthy of the people they represent. So between the Women's Club and the American Legion, we have started a campaign that will allow individuals and businesses to help us to renovate those crosses, to install them with new eight and a half foot flagpoles, three and a half, three by five US made American flags. They will be displayed in Veterans Memorial Park. Everybody know where Veterans Memorial Park is. Across the street from the senior center as you go into the rec. There's a monument down there. It's also being renovated at the same time. There will be a dedication ceremony at about 5:00 on Memorial Evening. So if you would like to attend, we'd be glad to have you. Some of you are already participating, whether you know it or not. Every time I hear about the procedures that are going to go on for that dedication, it gets a little bigger and a little bigger and a little bigger. For all I know, the Goodyear Blimp may be there. I'm not sure. It may be by that time. But anyway, there will be a dedication ceremony. There will be 192 brand spanking new crosses and flags. Be glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. It's an honor.
Thank you all for being here. Okay, who would like to come speak next? Yes, sir. Come on up. Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Luke Hillen. I'm a Walker County resident here in Lafette. And my comments will pertain to the county animal shelter. My two dogs were picked up by animal control on Tuesday night. First of all, I would like to say to whoever's livestock pen they got into, I'm sorry. And thank you for using the animal control and not taking matters into your own hands. I should, I should have them dog tagged and name and address properly on there. And I understand that. And that will be done. The wireless fence collar batteries that I had, they died and they ran off. And that's kind of what happened. Second, to the ladies I have spoken with at the shelter, Courtney and Claire, I believe their names are, they were exceptionally friendly. And I appreciate their kindness. But for my comment on that, I would like to say that the fee policy to receive your animals back from the shelter is insultingly high, especially on having it been a first offense in a county that's average individual income is around $23,000 a year as of 2019. If your animals haven't been neutered or spayed, in order to receive them back after the shelter spays or neuters them, it's $80 an animal. So 160 for me. If you don't want them spayed, it's $150 an animal. So 300 for me. Having them neutered most likely entails your dog will be spending an even longer time in the shelter, meaning the county will be housing and feeding them for a longer period of time. These prices are a bit high. And although I understand the reasoning for having your animal neutered or spayed, it's not the government's decision, nor should it ever be, on what you to, on what you should do for your animal regarding the animal's health, so long as they are treated properly. Luckily, I'm able to afford their release. But I fear some families in the county would be stuck with the decision of groceries for their family, or shoes for their children, over being able to reunite with their animal. Then what happens at the shelter when you can't afford their release and nobody adopts them? Are they euthanized? I don't know. Maybe. In fact, it's easier and less expensive to simply not claim your dog. If that's your dog up there, and you just simply say, well, not me, it'd be easier for that to go to do it. These fees are a little short of extortion. I'm of opinion you should at least be warned for a first offense before you face such steep fines. Everyone makes mistakes. As do many fines, penalties, or laws in our county, state, and country, this policy affects the lower class more than anyone else. I expect this could fall on some deaf ears, but I am hopeful that the board will take this into consideration. My complaints into consideration. And I thank you guys for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you for your comments. And I will say, we do have some public funding sources that if someone comes up that's financially not able, we had a case just a couple of weeks ago with a single mom. And we were able to help them get their animal spayed. So we don't want that cost.
Without that fee?
Yes, sir.
That is good.
We don't want that to be a barrier for someone getting their, their pet back. And the last thing we want to do is euthanize an animal.
Absolutely. But mine were picked up on Tuesday. And I got in touch after, took a little bit to get in touch with them over there. But they did finally call, well, they didn't call it back. I finally just called it up. And they're still there. And you know, that was Tuesday night. I inquired about it Wednesday night. I did agree to get the neutering because, sorry from my guys, but 160 was better than 300. So, and I'm still, I haven't heard anything from them today. And they said maybe Friday. So I'm hoping, you know, maybe hear something back from them today. But like I said, they, they did, they were very nice when I did talk to them. And I would like to put that on the record too. They were, they were super nice.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner, I'd like to.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you, Luke, for bringing it up to our attention as well. And for your input. And for anybody, like I said, when you come and you've got something that you can put before us that will help us with continually changing and working towards making things easier for the citizens. I appreciate you taking the time.
Especially with the board, I know you guys are going to do that. Or I feel that you guys will, will do that.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you, guys.
Yes. Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight?
Commissioner Whitfield, before I take the stand over here and my time starts, I'll talk about freedom of speech, for one thing, just one thing. I think we may have to identify exactly what freedom of, what speech actually consists of. I'm going to ask for some agreements from some of you fellas. Do you believe that when we speak English and we're in an English-speaking country?
Okay, go ahead and go to the podium.
I'm going to ask a question.
Go to the podium for us. You need to be in order. So you need to go to the podium.
Well, don't call me out of order until I identify what speech we're going to use.
Okay, come on. Go to the podium.
And I'll let you know when I'm addressing. You understand?
Your, your time has started, sir. Need to go to the podium.
I said I didn't want no start. I've got some terms here that have to be identified. And you can't call me out of order.
Well, I can determine when your time's starting. That's when you were recognized.
I'm asking some questions now, Senator.
You need to go, you need to go to the podium.
I asked you in the last meeting, I asked you for a personal and private conversation. And you took my telephone number down. You committed to me. And it's been advised that, you know, I shouldn't speak in private to some of you guys. And I asked you for a private meeting. You and my Commissioner Stoltz.
That's right.
And you wrote my telephone number down.
We intend to get with you, sir.
What you haven't got with me yet is my time's up. We're talking about freedom of speech. And speech is in the English language. And I have a number, I have two dictionaries here. And I have a book of laws. This book right here, okay? Now, we're talking about terms. And I'll just tell you that I have it right here. I can go through every one of these. I don't find any word in the English language that says N-word. That is N-W-O-R-D. But I do find the other term. I don't find terms like political correctness in here. Okay? That's just for a good start. I've got terms of what racism actually is. I've got terms in here that describes, and if I speak any of these terms, I'm not talking out of line. The word nigger is in here, but the.
That's enough. I'm saying, I'm saying you're racist and I'm leaving. Because I will not say, I'm not racist.
Mr. Burnfield, your time is up, sir.
When can we have the private?
Your time is up. It's time for you to go, sir.
I'll ask you to leave the building.
Exit the building.
Exit the building, please.
Mr. Burnfield, it's time for you to go, sir. It's time to go. You're out of order.
Admittedly.
It's time for you to go.
I just want to.
Mr. Burnfield, you need to leave the building, sir.
Leave the building.
You need to leave the building, sir.
Leave the building. Okay. I just want to know when I'm going to get my private.
Okay, sorry about that disruption. All right, anyone else that'd like to speak tonight?
No, but thank you guys for doing that.
Okay, thank you. You can need to keep order, please. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're going to move to the next items on our agenda. Under new business, we do have a purchase order number 2021-775. And this is a purchase order that will be funded out of our 2020 splotch for our, for purchase of vehicle through the Georgia Department of Safety, government auto vehicle for a Dodge round pickup truck for the Walker County Sheriff's Office. We have Sheriff Wilson here with us. And as always, our purchases of over $25,000 of capital purchases, we always lot the elected official or department head to come and speak about those and just give our citizens an overview of how we're investing those tax dollars for the betterment of our community. So, and if you would like, you actually have two. They're back to back.
I do.
We also have some Dodge Chargers from Jenkins. So if you'd like to just include those in both your comments, we'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you for the board for allowing me to speak tonight. And good to see everyone here in attendance. I have submitted two purchase orders, as the commissioner said, number 775 and 776, to be paid out of the budgeted splotch funds for 2021 and beyond for the next six years, I guess. And we are looking to upgrade our fleet. We try to do this every year. We budget somewhere between 12 to 14, 15 automobiles to keep our fleet up to the speed and keep the new vehicles on the road and, and move the old vehicles out. So this is not, nothing unusual. We do this every year. This year, we are proposing spending $306,530 on 11 vehicles. And that purchase order is to Jenkins Chrysler Dodge Jeep Incorporated here in Lafette. And we're also proposing to purchase one pickup truck, Dodge round pickup truck, in the amount of $26,912.70. And that comes from the Georgia Department of Public Safety procurement program. And that is what used to be the excess property out of the state of Georgia. We found that we could buy that truck at a cheaper price than we could anywhere else local. So a total of 12 vehicles, one at 306-530 and the other one at 2691270. And I appreciate your consideration for those purchases to upgrade the vehicles at the sheriff's office.
Does anyone have any questions from the board for the sheriff at this time? And as he said, this is just in taking splotch dollars that we've invested. So this is within the budgeted guidelines over, over a period of time through our splotch. So if there's no further questions, we'll move for a motion. We'll do these one at a time for a motion to approve purchase order 775 for the Dodge round pickup for $26,912.70.
I'll make a motion to approve the pickup.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore and a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board?
Yes.
All right, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this purchase order. And then as the sheriff mentioned, we have the second purchase order. And this is to Jenkins Chrysler's Dodge here in Lafette. And this is for the assortment of vehicles there that they're going to be buying. So we'll call, is there a motion to approve this purchase order 776 in the amount of $306,530?
Motion to approve the purchase order number 776.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries. We'll approve that purchase order. Okay. Next item on our agenda, I have a proclamation that I would like to read publicly by the Chairman of Walker County, Georgia. A proclamation of Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month, whereas multiple myeloma is the second most common blood cancer in the world and is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow and can occur in multiple areas inside the body. And whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 140,000 people in the United States, an estimated 34,920 case, new cases will be diagnosed and 12,410 deaths will occur from this disease in 2021, according to the American Cancer Society. Whereas, one predominantly found among those 65 and older, where it continues to be most frequently diagnosed, multiple myeloma is increasingly being identified in 30, 40, and 50-year-olds. It is also nearly twice as likely to occur among African Americans and is one of the leading causes of cancer deaths among African Americans. And whereas the cause of multiple myeloma is not known, continued investment in innovation is necessary to determine safe and effective treatment options, including new drugs and therapies now in the research phase. And whereas, greater awareness of this disease among clinics and the general public will lead to early detection and treatment, improvement, health, health outcomes, and bringing comfort to patients and their family. Therefore, I, Chairman K. Whitfield, Commissioner of Walker County, Board of Commissions, do hereby designate March as the Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month in Walker County to increase public knowledge of this disease and advocate the vision of finding the cure for multiple myeloma. Sign and seal the 25th day of February 2021. And our sheriff is here with us tonight. And he is a survivor of multiple myeloma. So y'all give him a hand. Thank you for being here and bringing attention. And keep up the fun.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, we have a resolution we're going to read here next for approval of the board. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Resolution 009-21, Board of Commissioners of Walker County to authorize Walker County Tax Commissioner to accept non-cash payment for taxes, whereas the Walker County Tax Commissioner performs the important service of collecting taxes, license, and other fees due to Walker County, whereas the vast majority of county tax, license, and other fees are paid in forms other than cash, including personal, company, and bank checks, money orders in three, credit cards and debit cards. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners desires to authorize the Tax Commissioner to accept taxes, license, and other fees in the above referenced form of payment without any personal liability to the, to the Tax Commissioner if any payments is subsequently dishonored. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, in accordance with provisions of OCGA Section 485-146, hereby authorizes the Tax Commissioner to accept payments of tax, license, and other fees in the following form: one, cash; two, personal, company, or bank checks; three, money orders; four, checks, excuse me, credit and debit cards, without any personal liability to the Tax Commissioner if any payments are subsequently dishonored. Sought resolved and adopted the 25th day of February 2021. This is something that we do each year, that the Tax Commissioner asks us to do, to my knowledge. I don't think we've ever had a problem. But to be in compliance with this OCGA section, we wanted to present this resolution by the, by the request of our Tax Commissioner. And so if there are any questions at this time, I'll try to fill those or turn to our county attorneys. Any board member have any questions on this?
No, sir.
Okay. If not, we'll call for the vote. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Yes, sir. I'm making a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, our next purchase order, 2021-780, is also funding coming out of our 2020 splotch for a Bobcat of Chattanooga, for a T770, T4 Bobcat compact track loader with the attachments, and also a trailer to be able to move this piece of equipment. And this is also coming from our Public Works splotch budget. So we have our Public Works Superintendent Carlin Bowers. We're just going to ask him to speak a moment about their need and his time of researching to make sure this is the right piece of equipment.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak. This is replacing a T380. It's got about 4,000 hours on it, repairs versus a new one. It just made sense to go ahead and get this thing replaced. The trailer, just another trailer to handle the weight of this new machine. We various projects around the county, brush, ditch, ditching, clipping shoulders, tile replacements, you name it. Bobcats never, they leave the, leave the shop every day. So it's most definitely needed. Certainly appreciate it. The tractors are on here next.
Okay, let's go to this one first.
Okay.
It's kind of a total, unique, different project. Is any board member having any questions for Mr. Bowers?
So, so Carlin, this one, excuse me, is coming just with the bucket, is that correct?
Yes. We currently have all of our attachments at the shop. They're all still in good shape. So we didn't, didn't see any need to bring any more attachments in on this. And this is coming from Bobcat Chattanooga.
Good question. Any other questions from the board?
Carlin, the Bobcat with 4,000 hours, we continue to use it occasionally or trade them?
This one, we, the options there, trade or put up for a public auction. I don't feel that we should need to put any money into it. We've gotten the goodie out of it. So it's, it, it will probably, this one probably needs to be moved on down the line.
Yeah, the next time we have a public sale, most likely we will surplus that and, and put it in the sale. But temporarily, it would be there as a backup if needed. But it's pretty much end of life. Good question. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Do we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This purchase order will stand approved. Okay, the next we have is a purchase order also for our Public Works Department. And this is, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, landfill. I'm sorry. Yeah, let's go to the landfill next. And we'll ask Mr. Bowers to come back. Okay, this is purchase order 21-793, again coming from our splotch funds. This is also a Bobcat of Chattanooga. This is a bigger unit. This is a T870 for the Walker County landfill. So this is Payne Gilli, our landfill superintendent. So Payne, would you give us some comments on this, please?
Thank you, Chairman Whitfield, board members. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all about this. This piece of equipment will give us the versatility at the landfill to do a lot of different tasks with one piece of equipment, rather than buying an individual piece of equipment for each task. There are a variety of attachments that we can purchase that will help us accomplish this. We'll, this will take the place of our current Bobcat. It's a Model 630. That'll be transferred over to the road department. It's smaller. They can use it in tight, tight places. The attachments that we're looking at are heavy duty bucket, a rute grapple, and a six-way dozer blade. So.
Okay, so allow us. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Payne?
No.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this purchase order.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries to approve this purchase order.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Payne. Okay, now we'll get Mr. Bowers back up. This is a purchase order 2021-794, also coming from our 2020 splotch. This is for three tractors from Franklin Tractor, New Holland T6, TS6, 110 four-wheel drive with the diamond. drive with a Diamond 60-inch rotary boom mowers for the road department. So, Mr. Bowers?
These three are replacing three of our older mowers. There again, repairs versus purchasing, just to get more tractors on the road, hopefully, and pretty much staying ahead of, trying to stay ahead of our mowing, basically just replacing the old with the new. It's going to cost a lot to fix what we have, so makes more sense to do this.
We've been fighting mowers for the last four years and trying to buy a couple at a time, and I guess probably been two, three weeks ago, myself and Mr. Bowers and Mr. Hart sat down and went through all of our fleet at our road department, and I think Mr. Hart was quite surprised how worn and torn some of our heavy equipment was.
Pretty old.
And so we've got some tractors that are up over 7,000 hours, I believe, if memory serves me correctly. So we've, we're on borrowed time with many of these. So any board member have any questions for Mr. Bowers?
I'm just curious, Carlin, will you, any of the old ones will you keep for backups? Or will we dispose of them as we will other surplus later on in the sale? Or are you thinking about trading them as well? I'm just curious.
This situation, we'll probably keep these, we'll keep maybe one or two of the best of the three and force them backups. It's like anything, anything could happen. Well, but anything that we can put in a sale, we'll put it in a sale. The last sale that we had, we got rid of the two worst. But yeah, we'll more than likely keep these, and because we still have some old stuff out there. Some parts are interchangeable, and it never hurts to have a spare around.
Yeah, that's one thing we're constantly running into with some of our older units, they're so old, it's hard to get parts.
Get the parts.
And so if nothing else, we may use one of these, at least maybe for parts if need be, as we upgrade our fleet over the next couple of years.
Sounds good. Thank you, Carlin.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Just make sure we clarify this. So with the purchase of these three tractors and this other tractor, that will give you how many crews to put out mowing on the rideaway?
We'll still have just four crews.
Four crews?
Mow 1,400 miles of rideaway.
Right, because each crew will have two tractors. Yeah, okay.
We, the north end, going to work that a little different this year. We got a shoulder mower last season. Probably going to put one arm mower and a shoulder mower, and at times, if I can, I'm going to put two arm mowers and a shoulder mower up there. The other three will have an arm mower and a bat wing, and to mow everything else, so. We'll still have the same amount of crews, it's just with hopefully less downtime.
Right, newer equipment, yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
So the north end will be going back to two tractors this year? Yes, yes. There were a shoulder mower and a knuckle boom, and hopefully, if things work out, I might be able to put two knuckle booms and a shoulder mower up there, and maybe weave one around, take care of some other stuff, you know, off the, you know, kind of split the route up a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve purchase order 794 in the amount for three tractors with the Diamond 60-inch cutters, $370,698?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order stands approved. Okay, the next purchase order, 2021-795, is also a New Holland, but this one here will have a bat wing on it on that unit, so it's a different setup. So would you like to speak about it?
This is basically the same tractor, but it's pull-type mower, wider shoulders. It's going more towards the south end, just there again, replacing, replacing some of our older, worn-out stuff with hopefully a little less downtime, keep things rolling.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bowers on this one?
I'm much in on that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order 795 in the amount of $79,855?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the approval for this purchase order. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Okay, our next action item before our executive session, this is an intergovernmental agreement contract between the Lookout Mountain Judicial Drug Task Force. This is in collaboration with the Chautauqua County Sheriff's Office, Chautauqua County, the City of Lafette, City of Tryon, Dade County Sheriff's Office, Dade County, Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit District Attorney, Walker County Sheriff's Office, and then Walker County Government. This just outlines the general understanding of how much personnel and how this organization operates. So this does call for assigned personnel. Chautauqua County Sheriff assigned one deputy, Dade County Sheriff assigned two deputies, City of Lafette will assign one officer, Town of Tryon will assign one, Walker County Sheriff will assign one deputy and one support staff person. Sheriff Wilson being with us tonight, I'm going to put you on the spot. Did you have anything you'd like to speak to about this?
No, this is just a reoccurring MOU that we have to do annually, and it just kind of tells who all of the players are and who participates and who assigns what personnel there to it, is basically what it is. You already announced all the different units of government. It just, it outlines who is involved in this agreement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any board members have any questions for the sheriff on this?
No, sir.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to say thank you to all the officers on Drug Task Force. They do a wonderful job ridding our county of illicit drugs and the fallout that comes from that. They do a great job, so just hats off to those folks.
Thank you, Wilson.
Well spoken.
Will said. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement.
How much motion we approve the intergovernmental agreement to Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit Drug Task Force?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew, a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda is executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? If so, state the reason, please.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Blake Moore to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will recess at this time, and we will step into the conference room. And once we complete our executive session, we'll be back and continue our meeting. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joe Leguie, Public Relations Director for Walker County Government. The board has just entered executive session. This is a process that allows elected officials to discuss a specific, sensitive topic behind closed doors. These are topics that are exempt from the Georgia Open Meetings Act. Executive session topics must fall into one of three categories: litigation, real estate, or personnel matters. In terms of litigation, the need may arise for the board to consult with a county attorney on pending or potential lawsuits, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought by or against Walker County Government, its officers, or employees. Real estate covers discussions regarding the future purchase or acquisition, disposal, or lease of property. Personnel matters would cover the discussion or deliberation on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal of a Walker County government officer or employee. Now, if a vote is needed pertaining to an issue discussed in the executive session, it must be taken in an open meeting, otherwise it is not binding. There's no timetable set for an executive session. It could last five minutes or even five hours. Because we don't know how long it will be before the board resumes the regular meeting, we will end this live stream shortly and start a new feed when the executive session concludes. Now, make sure that you turn on your notifications for the Walker County Government Facebook page, so you're alerted when the meeting resumes. Under your follow settings for this page, scroll down to the notifications, then select "Live Video" and click on "All Notifications." Thanks for watching, and we'll be back in a bit. Walker Transit recently expanded its service to improve access for workers in need of transportation to one of Walker County's largest employers. Before sunrise, this bus now starts the day picking up riders at the Rossville Hardees.
Good morning.
It's the first of three stops along a new route for Roper Corporation to provide their employees with direct pickup and drop-off locations throughout Walker County.
Roper approached us about some of the employment barriers that exist in our community, and one thing we agreed on was adequate transportation. So we partnered with our local Hardees to establish a bus stop.
Monday through Friday, the Roper route starts at the Rossville Hardees at 5:15 in the morning, and then heads to Hardees' locations in Chickamauga and Lafayette, before arriving at Roper Corporation at 6:15, in advance of the company's first shift.
Have a nice day.
Walker Transit then returns to Roper Corporation at 5:30 in the evening and transports riders back to the Hardees' bus stop location of their choice.
You can get transportation here, reliable transportation, instead of, you know, accepting a job and then not being able to make it because of not having a mode of transportation.
Roper Corporation, a wholly-owned subsidiary of GE Appliances, a higher company, employs more than 2,100 people in Walker County. Due to increased demand for appliances, the company recently announced plans to add another 150 workers locally.
Having transportation is a requirement to even be able to have a job here in Walker County, so this is just a method of partnering with the local community to be able to provide some type of service that would be of a benefit, not only to the company, but also to the people that live in this county.
The Roper route is a pilot project that could be expanded to assist other industries in the future.
And I believe it's the very first bus stop that's been established in Walker County. Transit normally operates from door to door. In other words, we're a curbside service.
One-way transportation costs $4 per person, which is the standard rate for all Walker Transit customers.
We don't have any action items from our executive session, so the next item on our agenda is Commissioner comments. So we'll start down here in District 1. Commissioner Blake Moore, you got anything you would like to bring public tonight?
Just thank everybody for attending, and we had an email that asked for us to fill people in on what was going on in our district. You know, the new house development, I talked to Robert, is still moving forward. And we're in need of a playground in the city of Rossville, and the city couldn't make that happen right now because of prioritizing their splotch money. So they were going to push that off, and it was possible it would be next year. So I got to talking to City Councilman Mike Hicks, and we were not okay with that. So we, me and Courtney, my wife, reached out to Mr. Wardlaw, and he is very generous and going to help us kick this thing off with a barbecue fundraiser on March the 20th at the Rossville Civic Center. If you're on Facebook, please go on there and share that stuff to help us get the word out. And that's something very positive that we need right now in this COVID crisis. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Askew?
Again, just thank everybody that comes out and participates. Thank you for your patience with us. We're trying to get this thing moving at a good pace and working together and feeling our way through it. So just a thanks to everybody for your contributions and your patience, and appreciate your support.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, so kind of three things that are going on in District 3. This Saturday, which is actually in District 2, but it involves the whole county, Wade Hutchinson, our county agent, and Casey Hobbs, our 4H agent, are putting on the Northwest District Project Achievement Event up at the Civic Center. So this is a good program that they've been pushing through COVID with, and they actually are going to have that this Saturday, so I'm going to try to go by and attend that. And if you don't know Wade and Casey, they do a good job for everybody in Walker County. Another thing I want to point out is our high school basketball team in Lafette has won the district this year, and they won their first state playoff game last night, so they're in the Sweet 16 of the state playoffs. So that's something we're excited about in District 3. And also the high school, the principal told me this week that 28, she had 28 top-10 distinguished honor graduates in this year's graduating class. And last thing I want to say is that Carlin and crew finished the East of Mercy Road project yesterday with the reflectors in both roads. So we're all very pleased with that. I saw them out there working on it. So that's three things going on in District 3. Robert?
Thank you. Yes, go LHS.
Yes, sir.
All right. So just wanted to mention a few things, and this is pertinent to District 4 as well as the other districts, just a little bit about COVID. We're doing a little better in our county. We're seeing some improvement in our COVID cases. Our numbers are starting to drop some. Today was the last day that the Walker County Health Department would be doing testing, free testing for COVID. However, there are other facilities in our county that are going to be doing testing. The COVID line, I would encourage people to call 706-620-0887 if you are in the category 1A, healthcare providers, first responders, 65-plus, as well as caregivers, to get set up for a vaccination. I did find out today that the state on March 8th is going to open up 1A to teachers K through 12, as well as staff members. That also will include adults with intellectual disability, children with intellectual disabilities. So keep that in mind after March the 8th. And finally, Johnson &amp; Johnson's going to have a vaccine coming out, so we're going to have a third vaccine. So we are heading in the right direction with regard to vaccinations. Everybody in the county who wants a vaccination will ultimately get one, and I would encourage folks to strongly look at that. Thank you.
Hey, one thing, Robert, I had to, that if you're a veteran from any branch of service, the VA is also doing COVID vaccines. Right now, they're doing 55 and up. So if you served at all in the military, contact the Chattanooga VA, and they'll walk you through the program. I'm on the waiting list now there.
Excellent.
Okay. Very good. We appreciate everyone watching and being with us here tonight, and at this time, we'll move for a form of a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn meeting.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or comments before we go?
No, sir.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and it is 8:48. Appreciate it.